I've got six o'clock. So at six o'clock, I call this meeting a Saginaw City Council order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item number two is the invocation for that Pastor Ronnie Mills. Welcome Reverend.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, I just want to thank you for the privilege that it is to gather tonight and discuss the matters of the city. I pray, dear Lord, that you would oversee all that's done. I'm asking God that just as your word says, that we would not lean on our own understanding, but to acknowledge you and you'll make straight our paths. Father, I pray that that's done tonight. I pray to your glory and to your praise, and we ask these things in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Item three is audience participation. So you're allowed to speak any posted item on the agenda if you wish to. See, Janice, the city secretary, and she will set you up. We can only discuss items that are on the posted agenda. Item four is the consent agenda. I have had a request to pull B and C. So initially, we will do A, action regarding minutes of December 7th, D, action regarding amendment one to the individual project order for Kim Lee Horn, and E, action regarding authorization for two additional positions in police department and one inspector in the training position building inspection department. So I'll entertain a motion for A and D and E.
Mayor, make a motion that we accept the consent agenda A, D, and E.
Cindy, have a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Let the record reflect, we have a quorum. We have a full house this evening. I appreciate everybody coming out, and a happy new year to you all. Should've said that first, shouldn't I? All right. Item B, action regarding authorization of individual project order with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for pavement management program. For that, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I think earlier today or later last evening, we provided some additional information on this program that we plan to utilize in the budget process to determine what maintenance needs are required in our street system and optimize that pavement rehabilitation program. So I tried to answer any questions you might have. I know it's a little complicated and different, so.
Counselor questions? Mary, yes.
I'm not opposed to the program at all. I just have a question and maybe a suggestion depending on how the question is answered. And the drive system with the specialized vehicle, would it be able to look at parking lots?
It would. It could be utilized on parking lot. In reference to ASTM spec and the response to the questions to Mr. Lawson's points, that is a spec that applies to streets and parking lots. So yes, I mean, any pavement surface, it could be applied to.
Because I think it would be a good idea to include at least for sure the parking lots for the individual businesses on Saginaw Boulevard. Some of the older ones have very needing to be maintained parking lots.
Yeah, the issue with that is they're private.
Right. But what I was going to say was if we could determine the ones that needed repair, then we could go to them with that business improvement grant program and perhaps give them an incentive.
Yeah, I just, I mean, we can discuss internally with staff about that, but I just, to me, that comes close gift to public funds on private property. But you could do a visual inspection, just like we do today with our hundred center line miles of streets in Saginaw. So we, you know, we can do a visual inspection of those services.
Because some of them might not know about the business improvement grant program. And, you know, that might give them an incentive to go ahead and repair that parking lot.
Yeah. We can give Mr. Little some more work to do.
Yes.
In that regard.
He will say, why did you bring that up? But anyway, I just thought we might be able to do that.
We'll consider that, to the extent that we can.
Thanks.
Any other questions on item B? Yes, Cindy.
Too hardened. Is this going to be a recurring cost annually? Or will, do we have like a setup for this first time? And will that price be reduced in the future? How does this work looking ahead?
There will be some mobilization setup costs initial that won't, that will not be recurring. But as we responded in our memo to the full council, there will be an assessment done on a three-year cycle where today we do it on an annual cycle. But today, we do it visually, so it's real subjective. Several people are out in the field making their own assessment. And, you know, my opinion on what that pavement condition might be a lot different than what your opinion is. So this takes the subjectivity out of that assessment and gives us more of a data-driven basis to make our decisions on.
I did have another comment on page four of the background information. It talks about possible additional services. And one of them is structural inspections of bridges. And I know we haven't opened that bridge yet, but I'm just encouraging us to really make that very important, that we do inspect that bridge, you know, as often as, maybe more often than what is even suggested, you know, just to make sure it's always safe.
I don't know if council's aware, but there is, I don't know if it's through Federal Highway Administration, but TechDOT does a periodic inspection of all of our bridges, not just, I mean, when you think of the bridge, you think of the overpass. But we have, I don't know how many total, but 10 or 12 bridges that are considered bridges, large culverts, crossings under streets, they consider that a bridge. So we get a structural assessment and just comments on the general condition of the bridge and remedies, you know, what we need to do to help mitigate those problems.
So do you feel like they do that as often as is necessary?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on item B? Sure.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
But I was also wondering, was this particular item in our budget for this fiscal year?
It was not. When Randy Newsom and I went to the APWA conference in Missouri, he had, and I, attended several classes on pavement management and pavement management software in particular. In fact, when I first came to Saginaw, you recall, we had an acting city manager at that time. My first, one of my first questions is, you know, does Saginaw have a pavement management system? Because it is a valuable tool. I mean, it automates a lot of the decisions. It also provides you a lot more information that you get. I mean, we can tell you at the end of our assessments, you know, how many streets in Saginaw, how many miles of Saginaw are in poor condition. And there is a standard for what a poor condition is and what the treatment is to either rehab that or go into a full construction. So we can tell you if the city's goals, which are identified perhaps in the comprehensive plan, is that, you know, I saw one of the bullets was that we want streets that are passable in good condition. You can make those sorts of decisions in the budget process, how much money to apply to get a certain standard citywide in our streets. Now, you know, we typically budget the same amount of money every year for street maintenance. This will allow you to make an educated decision on, are we keeping up? You know, it's just like your house. You know, you have to maintain your house. If you let the house go, then you're going to spend a whole lot more money in the future. So this helps optimize the use of public funds in our street maintenance program.
And this Drive software system, this is something that we are purchasing for, specifically for the city of Saginaw?
This is a proprietary software by Kim Lee Horn, and I know that other cities use that software also.
Okay.
But this will be a specific application for us. Yes.
Okay. That's what I was wondering. I didn't know if our information was going to go into a shared database with the other cities.
Oh, no. No, it'll be just, yes, it's for our use and it'll be customized for our city.
And you won't be locked into a specific software. The GIS files, you could transfer to any software in the future if you wanted to try a different program.
As in for a data analysis type?
Right. So you, like, it wouldn't be Drive specific.
This data collects data then, is what this does.
It collects data, but it also massages the data to, basically to spit out a report that tells you the different options, maintenance options that you might have.
Okay.
And what the cost is. I mean, it'll generate a cost at the end of that also.
Okay. I was just kind of curious, you know, what is going to cost us, you know, as time goes on?
You know, you could rock along and do it the way we're doing it now, but I mean, at some point, you know, frankly, we're not keeping up with degradation of the streets that are out there. If you budget the same amount of money every year when you consider inflation, et cetera, et cetera, you know, you're falling down behind the curve. So this will help us at least know what the curve is. And then again, to make an educated decision on how much money do we want to apply to get to some standard, whatever that is. That's a policy decision from council.
Right. And I understand, we do have a lot of roads that do need some TLC.
That's right. And this will help extend the life of those roads, so.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, guys. Any other questions on B?
Yeah, the, this program, I sent quite a few questions and asked them about it. And then at the end of the day, like you said, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it does save a significant amount of man-hours.
It does.
By doing that. And also, it actually, it actually applies scientific measurements consistently across the board. And it allows us to, within, I think it's like a six-month period, get a complete assessment of our roads and curves. And I don't remember if you, signs too, everything. So very quickly, like you said, we can get an assessment and understand exactly where we're at. And we can't do that with currently the way we're doing it. And even if we did, you send five people out, they're not applying the data, the measurements the exact same way.
That's right. I mean, we won't take 100% of the subjectivity out of those decisions, but this provides more qualitative data.
Yeah, instead of quantitative and people applying different things. So it's actually, I think, moving absolutely in the right direction.
Yeah, kind of something that I'd want to go right along and see how this works.
I would too.
All right, great. Thank you, Rick. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on B.
Mayor, make a motion that we accept agenda number B.
Okay. Have a second.
Second.
Nicky, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Excellent. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Rick. Item C, action regarding authorization of a letter of agreement with Encore Electric Delivery Company for Saginaw Northwest Booster Pump Station. Again, Rick Trice.
Thank you, mayors. As you recall, we've had two pump stations that were, we currently have under design. One of them, the Belt Mill Pump Station, has been advertised for construction. But the Northwest Booster Station on Park, William Houston Park with the elevated tank is where that booster pump will be. Requires electrical service, so this agreement allows Encore to set a transformer and a service line to power that pump station. There is also a propane generator onsite, so we have backup power, which, you know, we try to have or will have on all of our water system. So anyway, I don't know. Trying to answer your question before I hear it, so.
Any question for anyone else on C? Okay. If no other questions, I'll entertain a motion on item C.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve agenda item C as presented.
Charlie Tucker, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Moving forward, item five, presentation of 2020 Tarrant County Coronavirus Pandemic Book to John Ed Kiefer Library. And I think this is Janice England, city secretary, and also the county clerk.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Happy New Year. Mayor Louise Nicholson, your county clerk. Happy New Year, everybody. I'm your county clerk. So, thank you for having us out. I wanted to do a presentation and talk about the Tarrant County pandemic coronavirus book we put together. And we're offering it to all the cities, all the high schools in Tarrant County. We have 41 cities, the universities and the law schools. So I want to tell you a little bit about it and kind of go through just a two-slide presentation. I think we all agree 2020 was a year we've never seen before or experienced. The coronavirus changed everything, how we worked in the private and public sector. The background and purpose of this book is to memorialize the events of 2020 in the pandemic through an illustrative narrative as they occurred in Tarrant County government for our future generations. It was a six-month project that I kicked off when I asked one of my employees to start taking pictures of what was happening in downtown, the courthouse, what downtown Fort Worth looked like, the signs, the masks, everything that was new to all of us in Tarrant County. It officially kicked off in December of 2020 with the approval of Commissioner Court and the county auditor. So we got a local writer, professional writer, a local printer to put together this historical book, which is 176 pages. Governor Abbott is in the introductory message. Judge Whitley is in, contributed to the prologue. And the book has elected officials, Tarrant County Department and staff. And I felt as keeper of the record, part of my responsibility is not only to keep records, but every noun that to generate. And to me, this historical moment in time was something worth generating, and I got approval and support. We also put in the book the 1918 pandemic to show 100 years later how things kind of looked the same. In 1918, in the Star Telegram, looking up, you know, the Spanish flu there, they were asked to wear chin sales, which were hankker shoes. And there was a huge, huge contentious battle about people not wanting to wear chin shells because they did not believe the Spanish flu that was effective. So it's interesting how history never, ever not, doesn't repeat itself. We have a memorial page to share with future generations about the 41 cities and the people we lost during the printing of this book between March 10th, 2020, and April 21, before we had vaccines. More than 3,000 people did not have an opportunity to choose. And they were taken by this virus in Tarrant County. So we have the cities listed and those who lost their lives during this pandemic. To honor all those we lost, we decided to put this book in the hands of people that would treasure it, make it available to the public when someday somebody wanted to look and see what happened. So the Commissioner Court also embraced this, and they purchased their own set of books that they're offering to the public that they can buy for $20. And we have a limited amount of books that we use with our project that we're going to give to the different places. I think one of the most impressive things for us is that we gave these to historical societies and universities and things like that. But we did reach out to the Library Congress, and we asked them, would they like a copy of the book? And we assumed it would be digital because in the Library Congress, they really don't take printed books anymore. And they actually took two of our printed books to put in the Library of Congress in archives. So they just shows, goes to show you how important that 2020 was. We all lived through it. We're still living through it with the decisions we're making as a world, and we just hope everything gets better. So it's a privilege to donate this book to Saginaw, to the John Ed Keter Public Library, to Ms. Ellen Ritchie, if she's here. I didn't get a chance to meet her.
She's got to take a picture.
This is just a reference book for your library and the citizens of Tarrant County.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Want to get a picture? Keith, want to get a picture of Ellen and the county clerk?
We'll grab a picture real quick. I appreciate it.
I don't know. Probably need to move. We need to stand right here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate that. That's awesome.
Y'all have a good evening.
You too. Did she sign the book?
We can get her signed. All right, item number six, presentation of certificates for the 2021 Saginaw Christmas Parade. And that's me. So how do we want to do this? Want to just, is everybody here? I see several of the folks. I don't know if all folks are here. I didn't see, I didn't see her. Okay. We'll go Encore. Encore School Dance, excellent. And I'll read it real quick. So Encore School Dance won the best business entry in the 2021 Saginaw Christmas Parade. Congratulations to Encore. We'll ensure they get this certificate. All right, next, I have the award for best nonprofit entry, and that goes to Troop PAC 151. I think we have Dwayne Mann here and some other folks from the troop. Okay. Y'all come on down with two pictures. That guy gave me a gift. Wasn't that nice of him? Look at this. Very cool. And I'm going to do it like this, since I'm leaning over here. Next, I have the award for, I hope y'all can hear me, best community entry. That goes to Gary Larson, a very cool old car, which I remember seeing. And finally, we have crowd favorite. Crowd favorite goes to Eagle Mountain Saginaw ISD Marching Band. That's Sean Bell. How many kids did you have?
I think we had about 85 to 100.
It's okay. The marching band and the jazz band were my favorites. Did he give you a round to it?
Oh, I don't know.
Number seven.
Oh, he gave me.
Is it a round to it?
I don't know.
I think it's a little thing that says, yeah.
All right. And so the Encore School Dance, we will get their award to them, so. Thank you, guys. And thank you, Janice, and everybody putting it together. Next item, item number seven, 2021 Year in Review and Discussion of 2022 Work Plan. And for that, our city manager, Gabe Rayo. Gabe, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The mayor, every meeting, before every meeting, he tells me or asks me, how long is it going to be? And I tell him the same thing, "Mayor, I think it's a manageable agenda, but, you know, I can only control a part of the equation. Y'all control the rest. So for the next two or three hours, we're going to talk about 2021." I promise you, I'm kidding. Now, Mayor and Council, it's an honor to be before you to talk about the good work in our city in the past year. January marks four years of service for me here, which has been a great four years for myself and my family. Looking forward to the next four years. Can't do it without people. We have 170 of the finest employees that can be found. In addition to a number of prominent residents and volunteers, we have several board and commission members with us tonight, which is great. It's a team effort, so I'm really happy to be here. I'm going to go through the projects. Had a conversation one time with the mayor pro tem, and I took this to heart. She said, you know what, sometimes you don't need to tell us so much, you need to show us. So I wrote a memo summary of projects. You've seen all the projects before, and I've asked for your feedback. But I have mostly pictures to go through. So if you have any questions, let me know. And then I'll close on a request to be thinking about projects for 2022. So if you recall, in May, voters approved the largest bond package in Saginaw's history. That's by a factor of about three. If you remember, we called it the ABCs of Saginaw. All three propositions passed. These were recommended by a citizen bond committee. We have started work, which will be carried forward about the next five years or so to deliver these bond projects. So we've started work on design of our new library and senior center. A lot of excitement for that. It'll be, for those that don't know, it'll be located across the street, across the street here on Opal. Lee Howell, who's currently our police chief, in approximately a month, will be assistant city manager because I have unsuccessfully not been able to convince Dolph to stay around longer, is the project manager for that. So please keep him in your prayers because he has to appease two warlike factions, that is, the library board and seniors, to create a building that everybody can love and enjoy. So it's a tough job, but he carries a gun, so he's the best, the best person for the job. Actually, I'll back up. Our first street project that voters approved, y'all issued the debt, if you recall, in the summer, is the north section of Knowles, which is from Edwards to Woodcrest. That's out for bid now, and we should have a construction contract in the next month or so.
We will receive bids in January, but since it's not just a low bid, it'll take, yeah, another month to award.
Yeah. So we should see construction, our first street project, sometime later this spring.
The match from Tarrant County, when we get a final for that?
Yeah. So our highest priority project, as ranked by Tarrant County, was Knowles, which was approved, the phase one. My understanding is they're trying to figure out from cities what their delivery timeline is, so I might defer to Dolph real quick.
Yeah, they have not issued any of their portion of the debt yet, so they're still working on how much they can issue each year and how they're going to prioritize that. But we're proceeding with our project. It can be reimbursed whenever the funds are available from Tarrant County. We have the full amount funded through our bond issuance, and if we're not in the first round, we'll get it back at some point.
Yeah, we'll just keep going with our projects, and then when we're reimbursed, that'll just be less debt we issue or we do more projects, whatever the desire is at the time. Next project, it's coming to a conclusion, is the comprehensive plan. So the final draft is going to the Planning and Zoning Commission this month. It'll go to the city council for review and approval in February. If you can see, it's kind of small. We did a If you can see, it's kind of small. We did a lot of public outreach, which is.
Is that Brack on the screen? Is that you up there? Are you in your pajamas? What is that, Brack? I mean, we appreciate you joining in, but okay, just.
He, uh, he actually served on the comprehensive plan advisory committee, so there was a committee. You can see in blue, it's kind of small, but there was a number of focus groups and community groups that were contacted to get feedback. Quilters, the farmer's market. We did two town halls and one online town hall, which was fun, because it was actually pretty well attended, and we recorded. I think that screenshot is from one of the online town halls we did, and so excited to bring that to your attention pretty soon and get that finalized and in the books. That will also generate projects for us for the next several years, as we continue to grow and develop and redevelop. Our Parks Master Plan is going through the Parks Board and is nearing completion. That will come for your review soon, early this year. We've cataloged all of our current parks inventory and identified some potential improvements in the future, as well as identified opportunities for future parks. So, we've got an opportunity in the, near the Levon White Development, Western Center area, for a new park that we've called Little Fossil Creek Park. So that's exciting to think about maybe developing that in the future. City already owns some land, and there's some easements in that general area. There's a, about twenty-five acres we're working on acquiring off of Blue Mound Road, which was the old gun range. It went to back taxes to the school district, struck off, so we're trying to acquire that, just to keep in our inventory as a potential park in the future. What we'll put there or do there is to be determined, but twenty-five acres, it's along a creek. It's, you know, wooded and lovely and full of wild pigs, so if you need to feel the freezer, well, can't discharge firearms, city, city limits, so that's a bad idea. Didn't anticipate this as part of the bond election, but we created a program that kind of grew in popularity called Garage Gabs, where we, we visited neighbors on request just to talk about city issues. I think many of you attended, if not all of you, have attended a garage gab in the past, and they're really fun. So you hear this all the time, "I like Saginaw because it's, it's a small town." Well, I think what makes that small-town feeling is you can put a face with a name, and you can talk to somebody face-to-face. And when we get a complaint about a sidewalk or Park Center, the neighbors wanted striping on Park Center, we're able to do it and fix it. And when Sheldon appears, you know, he's always a crowd favorite. Sheldon's made a few appearances. So, we intend to continue the Garage Gabs in the future. They're tremendously popular and a valuable way to let people know, in a very casual and informal way, what's going on and what's coming and that sort of thing. Our diversity and inclusion committee, in the next month or so, will have an update. So this was a council-appointed committee of volunteers with a charge to talk about and discuss issues of diversity in our city. So, the committee received a presentation about the, the structure of the city, our former government. They got kind of a Reader's Digest version of the Citizens Police Academy to understand how PD operates. We were finally able to have a face-to-face meeting about a month or so ago, which was great to, to meet everybody and not have to worry about telling somebody you're on mute via our Zoom meetings. But a couple of takeaways from that. One, the committee recommended, we have a committee member in the crowd, that we do a cultural event in 2022, which we want to do a special event to honor diverse cultures in our city in partnership with the school district. We also talked about, and had discussions about how are we reaching out to residents and guests who may speak another language? So, that triggered a question, how many people speak multiple languages that are city employees? And I think we ended up about twenty-five. Melanie, the largest, largest department happens to be PD, and a number of officers now receive bilingual pay for, for being bilingual. So, I speak a language in a half. My half language is called Muskrat French, which is, I like to say hillbilly French. Also speak some Spanish in my old age and read Spanish pretty well, but it's been cool. We have, he puts me to shame nearly every single day, but Ayub, it's been a while since I've talked to him, so he's probably learned another language. He speaks five languages. Maybe he's up to six or seven. I bet it's a New Year's resolution. But we got a request, this is crazy, in Saginaw, Texas, for a translator of Swahili. It was from a kindergarten teacher, I believe, and so I got this email, and I said, "Hey, I know a guy that speaks Swahili." So, Ayub works at the library. He teaches English as a second language class, classes, as well as conversational French. I speak some French, although I didn't learn the correct way, so I need to attend those classes. We're starting a Spanish language class. Just a whole lot of fun things going on at the library, and, and a lot of these discussions came out of the diversity and inclusion committee. We did the planning, and it's funny, so a lot of the developments that you're seeing now started in the summer of 2018 or slightly a few months after that. The square, I think the city council executed a development agreement for the square in July of 2018. As you know, now north of Walmart, it's in construction. You see the road being cut and the drainage for the culverts coming in. Belt Mill, as you've seen, construction is underway, and they'll soon go vertical with houses and all the, the retail commercial center that's going there.
Is that a mountain they're building back there?
Yeah, Mount Saginaw.
Mount Saginaw.
Yeah, and in fact, the amount of rock, if anybody digs a, you know, fence posts or a pool or something in Saginaw, Texas, if you can ever make a bet, take it, you're gonna hit rock at like six inches. It's crazy. You've probably seen the spoils pile. They hit that for what will be the, there'll be ponds, constant level ponds, lakes, that are the entry feature to, to Belt Mill. So it's really exciting to, to kind of watch that unfold before our eyes, although it took several years of us working together to set that up with zoning and various incentive agreements. We created public improvement districts and our tax incrementary investment zone. Ms. White, who all dairy farmers are, are cut from the same cloth, she was from a dairy farming family. We kept in touch. At ninety-seven years, she finally decided to sell her land, so that has sold to a developer. She had asked me, I guess she's got an old trailer out on the property, she said, "Could you get that for me?" I said, "Well, I'll see what I can do." But we're excited to see that property at Blue Mountain and McLeroy develop here in the next few years. Really proud of our emergency management program and our award that we won at the Texas Municipal League. Joe is probably gonna run for governor, likable guy, cool mustache, and has done great with the Northwest SERC program. We're gonna come back to you here in a few months to talk about enhancements, potential enhancements for the food truck and farmer's market area. I think the desire is to expand the pavilions and covered space to accommodate more stuff. It's become a really popular spot. We're also proud of our shared services, so as you know, we have a arrangement with Blue Mound where we provide animal services. Want to encourage anybody here or listening, please go visit the shelter, adopt a puppy, kitty, or ten or twelve. Sadly, our shelter is almost always full, and once we get animals adopted, Jose, Wieland, Keith, staff, they've done a great job to transition to a no-kill shelter. I think we've kind of created a problem, because it's so good that people bring more pets, and they're full almost all the time. I think to plant a seed for the future, that may be a, maybe a future bond item, we think about expansion of the animal shelter.
I have a question about the animal shelter. What do we do with the animals? I mean, are any of them outside, you know, when these, when the temperatures drop like it did earlier, like sixteen degrees?
They're all inside. They, they have, they have a space or a place where they can go outside when the weather's nice, but when it's, it's not, they're all inside.
Okay, thank you.
The Training Grain Festival, I think y'all attended in October, was absolutely perfect. Credit Janice England and Karen Cromwell and Randy Newsom and a whole lot of people making that work. It's a year-round planning project, and that didn't happen by accident. So, we're excited for Training Grain to make, to come back again this year and build on the, the success that we had this past year. Mental health services, that was kind of a recent item. We're gonna keep having those discussions with Tarrant County in the police department and hopefully make use of the diversion facility that the county has created. I'm really, you know, our staff and working with great people are what keep me going, and it's just a pleasure to work with our employees. I'm so proud that we've had so many internal promotions. I really believe that when you can, and sometimes you can't, promoting from within is the best call, and that's a philosophy that won't change as long as I'm here. Our police and fire department reflect that. We had a number of promotions earlier this year in the fire department. That's just amazing, and happy to see folks that have stayed with the city for a long time and have trained themselves and put themselves in a position to take on more responsibility. Share a story. The hardest call on the, on the staff side ever, ever made in my career was having a discussion with, at that time, Captain Ragsdale, who I think skipped out. Oh, there he is. And telling him, "Hey, I didn't select you to be chief," but he's decided to stay with us, so next month, we'll have some sort of a ceremony to commemorate the occasion, but Ragsdale will be the next chief of police, and Lee will be promoted to assistant city manager, and we will not miss a beat. One of our lieutenants, Brandon Badavenic, will be promoted to assistant chief, and Corey Burnett, sergeant, will be promoted to lieutenant. So all internal promotions and all a lot of people that have a lot of tenure and have trained and prepared themselves for these opportunities, so I'm incredibly proud. Our building inspection program, I might lean on a couple of our council members who did some field trips, which I think is seeing is believing. That's maybe the most important education you can receive is, is out in the field. Larry's done a great job of, of training people and plugging them in, getting them certified, which is really difficult. You just approved a position to have another inspector in training, because the amount of our rental inventory continues to grow. Our interns, we continue to get good interns. There's a guy in the back with really long hair. We kind of felt sad for him, and he came and said, "Hey, man, could I have a job?" And then I said, "Whoa, that's Pedro. That's amazing." And he left us in the fall of 2018, and I don't think he, he's had a haircut since that time. But no, happy to welcome Pedro back as communications manager, which is a really important function. He's also gonna coordinate special events for us, but we've been blessed with great interns. We're able to plug them in where we have vacancies. We have a management analyst this month, Suzie, who's gonna be promoted to be planning manager. Mary Regal's retired, so. There's, there's no secret to this. If you have good people, they have the right attitude and character, we'll create opportunities for them.
How many interns have we brought in the last few years? Do you know how many?
Let me think. So, Pedro was round two, probably two. I think we're on nine? Yeah, so Jerry, I don't know, our current intern, I don't know if you've met him, Jerry is our newest. And our last batch, AJ one and AJ two, Ayub and Abdali, have, have went full-time, and then before that, Kevin and. Kevin's here. Kevin and Suzie. So I tell the, this is foolproof management philosophy, and credit me at some point, I'd like to take some sort of royalty or something off of it. I sat Pedro down and said, "Look, we need your replacement. You gotta get us somebody good, and if the person's bad, then I'm gonna have to destroy your career and ruin you." So, no pressure, but I haven't had to do that yet, and we continue by referral to get really great people that fit well with us. And a couple of our interns have gone on to other places. If you remember, our first two interns, Jared and Drew. Jared is emergency management coordinator in Rockwall County now, which is cool. He was interested in emergency management. That was before we had our emergency management position, and then Drew Jinks is working in Salina in some capacity, so it's fun to keep up with people. And we'll, we'll keep, keep doing that. It's, it's fun. Our summer apprentice program, which last summer was the first time we did it for high school students and college students, was tremendously successful. I think we have about four folks in that program that are gonna return for a second summer. They enjoyed it. The department directors would tell you, they loved having the help, and those students filled needs. We hired one employee full-time, so Jacob Chestnut is in Public Works now, went full-time, and he was a, a summer apprentice, so we're gonna keep, keep going. Melanie had a good idea with our youth council that we'll start back up again after a break from COVID to ask some of our youth council members if they want to participate as summer apprentices, so hopefully, if we get good students, that's kind of the farm team, and we'll keep moving them through. Tuition reimbursement program, we're in the second. Going into our third year, I guess, or close to it, for our tuition reimbursement program, and it's being utilized. Happy to see that and hope that it continues. Looking ahead, and these are just recommendations for 2022 projects. I want to get your feedback. If you'll recall, we'll take a resolution that outlines the council's priority projects for '22, put it in a resolution, and then have the council take action. And that's kind of our marching orders for this year. So, we did the education piece for the bond election. Now we're in the delivery piece, which is probably more important than the education piece, because people want to see action, and they want to see what they voted for happen. So, as I mentioned, we're in the design phase now, early stages of design phase for the library and senior center. We will go to construction for that first section of Knowles, and then we'll keep cranking projects out just as soon as we can. We talked about the pavement management system. I think that's gonna be tremendously useful to sort of put some, some data and logic as we think of asset management in the future. Planning for redevelopment, in about a year, the fire station will be vacant, will be in the new fire station. We've heard loud and clear from residents that residents want new restaurants, higher-quality restaurants and/or entertainment, so that site could potentially accommodate those desires. One thing that'll come out as a recommendation, the comprehensive plan, is for the city to initiate rezoning of undeveloped parcels, which I think is really important. There's very few undeveloped parcels now in the city, and the ones that are undeveloped need to fit the character of, of what the community wants in the future. So that's something to consider. I talked with council member Lawson, credit his idea, and I think, I'll include this for discussion, but a citizen satisfaction survey. So I think it's really important to get data or to hear from people and ask how we're doing. So, that's something staff can put together, and, and that'll give us information to, to make adjustments as we need to. We've been successful with code compliance using kind of a focus area framework. Saginaw Boulevard was the focus area this past year, made a lot of improvement. That was a demolition that the, the council approved, the old Washit area, it's now down. So that corner already looks a lot, lot different. The family has it for sale, and it'll redevelop something in the future. Just a picture of the old gun range, that's off of Blue Mound. It's, it's off the, the road quite a ways, but that space will be some sort of park or open space in the future. It's really fun. I'm sure the Parks Board will, will be excited to think about that. I offered that to Pedro, because we're running out of office space for all of our employees, to be kind of an open-air concept office, so he, he didn't take me up. But there's a power pole not far. I really don't know why he's that picky. Say this to everybody everywhere, you probably get sick of hearing it, but if you ever need something, give me a call. I, just like you do in grocery stores and wherever, I give people my card and my number, and if people let us know they have concerns, we're happy to answer. We always will. Hey, even better, yeah. I'll give you cards of mine to, to give out, but yeah, in closing, I'd love to hear your feedback on, on projects for 2022. Happy to be here and excited for the future to get.
Any questions for the city manager? On 2021?
Yeah.
Nikki, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I'm gonna say that I was one of the ones that did go out with.
Yeah, I, I want to say that I was one of the ones that did go out with the rental inspections and I'll point out, one of the things that we, that they did find was, and found it pretty quick, was a 120 volt electrical wire in the attic that had, it's against code to have, to have a junction in a, in a wall or in a ceiling space without a junction box. And it was just wired together up there and what that will cause is over vibration and stuff, it can, it can come loose and actually cause, pretty common to cause a fire for something like that. So, they found that and a couple of other things about as serious as that. So, it is, it is very important and I, I was, I was pretty impressed with that. The second thing, when is, because I got to ask you that, when's this bridge opening up?
Yeah, it's a, it's a $12 million question. So, we're waiting on power from Encore, I believe.
We are waiting for power on the bridge and they have to go through a elimination period to, to test out. And so Encore is, particularly recently is notoriously slow to respond to our requests. So, we're still working through that issue. Another one of the issues is that the contractor, excuse me, Weber, has about a 71 item punch list that they're working through. And one of the issues with that is, is that they have a, a lot of contract time left in their contract, so there's no real good way to try to force the contractor to, to respond and get the project done. You would think that that would be in their best interest to get it done and move on, but they, they, they're just, they're, they're just slow in, in trying to respond to this punch list. And one of the more serious items is that the, the parapet wall, the barrier wall that's on the bridge, the center line and outside lanes, we have reasonably that there may be some structural issues in, in certain segments because they poured hot concrete during the summer months and, and that may have caused some voids. We think the bridge is safe, but we're going to have to go through some testing just to verify that. So, just a lot of, a lot of laundry work or, or just little items that need to be cleaned up before the city be in a position to accept the project. So.
And we actually don't have a date?
They're, they actually have provided us a schedule for the punch list items and that, that would be according to their schedule, the middle of January. Of course, we had some extremely cold weather and some of the items like sealing and things of that nature, they're prohibited from doing. So, you know, I would say again, middle of January would be hopeful, but that doesn't include the assessment of the, of the concrete median or barrier walls, so.
Mayor Prokhorov?
I have a little question. On Facebook, I was tagged in a post about the low voltage wires that's hanging on the, are they going to fix that?
Those are actually cable, so they're not electrified. They don't have any current, so, but we are looking at a way to, to space the, the light poles through those wires. I'm told by the traffic folks that do those signals that, that, that's common. So, you know, it's, it's not a danger, but, but we understand that over time rubbing on that pole, you know, we, we don't want any kind of issues related to that.
I tagged Gabe, but I didn't see that you answered or anything and I thought, I'm just going to find out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're blessed in Saginaw to lead the nation on Facebook with traffic engineers, management consultants, railroad experts, you name it, so.
All right, other questions for Gabe? So, this was talking about 21. We'll come back at a future date, talk about 22 projects as well, so that's, but we can't move on until we say what an excellent year 21 was. A lot of work was done. When you stand back and look at all the stuff we accomplished in 21, it was an excellent year. Paramount on that list is the bond package. Thinking about that, when Gabe mentioned that, several other cities did not have bond packages pass. They had failures. Tarrant County had a failure as well in bonds, so we were very fortunate. I think it was the education, I think it was the projects, the quality of the projects and the, the origination from the citizens that really got it through, but we're very pleased and that was an excellent accomplishment. So, we cannot overlook that at all. All right, thanks, sir. Appreciate it. All right, moving forward. Item number eight is executive session. So, we will have executive session, we'll go and we'll come back to adjourn. So, pursuant to Texas government code 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, we will adjourn right now to executive session at 6:55. We will come back to adjourn the meeting. We will come back to adjourn the meeting.